I want to call to order the Litchfield City Council and regular meeting. I'll stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag and Mr. Raymond Kotzler is going to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne.
Mayor, I'm going to turn to before you run.
Just in case.
Probably start broadcasting, but it doesn't look like it.
Okay. We don't have a too lengthy agenda tonight, so we'll run right through it. I'll give everybody an opportunity to speak or ask a question if they want to. We just come out of our own work session and Jessica's been making us hard at work and I think the work sessions are good and but now every month probably one month too much. We'll skip a month and come back April, is that be all right? No, today's be May, we'll come back in May for the second meeting and they're open to the public. Anybody who wants to come have input. We're looking for community people to invest in this city with us, whether it's a cleanup program that we're going to have April the 4th or whatever it is, we want the community to be involved in what we're doing in and we want to have your input in it as well. So, uh, we're going to name the cleanup day again, but April the 2nd, I said the 4th, didn't I?
Yeah.
Yeah, I made two or three mistakes today, but I'll try to do better. You have attached to your agenda that Laurie sent to you, the minutes of the regular meeting on March 7th. Has anybody looked through those? Do you want to change them? Anything you see that's not right, want to change? Now's the time, be time to name it. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion.
Clayton and Jessica was tied for first place. Clayton's older, we let him out first and Jessica, you can be first next time. All in favor?
Aye.
Billy Dallas, we have appointed you to be the bill procurement type person. Have you looked at our invoices?
Yes, I have.
Do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Want to make a motion?
I'll move.
Jessica? No, Tootie's going to second that.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to, any visitors want to speak? Scott, did you want to say something?
Yes.
Karen, Terry, Ruby? Pudgy?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving away from visitors quickly. We have with us our code enforcement officer and planning zoning manager type person, Tyler Harold's here and you, if you've looked through your agenda, you know that he's bringing up a petition before tonight. This will be our first one, Monet Tyler, that we've had to approve. Did you want to come up and address the procedure? I know Erlene said it's a little bit special or maybe the property that you've got attached to us without using any names or addresses, just in general, you, the council's got a copy of that.
Yes, I provided copies of everything that we went through in the, our code enforcement board meeting. This property's been abandoned for several years. I think about three years ago it caught fire on the interior and it's been vacant ever since. You can see through the report that I've provided with all the pictures and everything. It's very dilapidated, very dangerous structure and sent the petition out to the code enforcement board and requested condemnation and demolition of the property to be ordered and it passed through the code enforcement board and they have extended their recommendation to the council to vote whether or not to condemn and order demolition on the property.
Okay, Tyler, has anybody got any questions about that property or anything that Tyler's doing? Erlene, did you want to take this opportunity to kind of instruct us to do?
Yes, Mayor. Basically, the code board are the fact finders, they have these hearings and then they write recommendations to the council. You all are basically the last check mark before these final orders are sent out. I will say, we had three properties on the agenda and just because this was our first meeting, we wanted to give you an update of how it went and I believe it actually went really well. We had one property owner show up, basically tabled that motion, they're going to be coming back at our next meeting in June. You know, I think it was really good that the city reinforced that we're just wanting to do the best for our community. And so, some of these property owners Tyler's made contact with that are taking it upon themselves to do the demolition work prior to the city forcing it to be done. This particular property before you tonight, property owners were not present. We have proof of service and Tyler being in communication, but you all are just the final check mark on this. And once you all vote on it tonight, if it's approved, then Tyler will serve that final order to the property owners. They'll then have 45 days to demolish it, if not, the city will then demolish it because all their appeal times would have ran. So, I just asked for you to take a vote tonight that would be required for the order to go out, adopting the recommendations of the code board and adopting the findings in order.
Erlene, refresh me, if we demolition it, do we put a lien on it?
We do, if we do it. Now, they will have, because even after you, they have a right to appeal to the Grayson District Court. So, what we do is we wait that time period out for them to appeal it. During that time period, they can come get a permit from Tyler and do it themselves. If not, city, after that 45 days runs, Tyler will begin the demolition process.
So, if they need a variance on that 45 days, can they come and ask for like 10 more? I mean, is that something they have an option if they had, if, if we see they're working at it and they can't get in in 48 days, are we, is it going to be fine for the three days?
Well, what could happen is, that could be always brought back before the code board and it kind of just starts the process over, so.
Billy, I can tell you this, although the program that we had, the $50 deal expired December 31st, when property owners come to Tyler and Tyler calls me and said, I've got a property owner that's willing to tear down a house, would you extend that deal? Always say yes. That's a lot cheaper to do that than us going over there, taking a piece of equipment over there and tearing it down. And we have had some, we've had several to do that.
Yeah, and we have had several and there was even some people at the meeting asking if that program was, because that program has ended now. Something I can do is, you know, basically amend that program and extend the program if that's something the council wanted to do.
Wesley, have you seen the cost go up on that side of your?
Not a lot yet. I mean, it's still kind of, you know, when they come in, it's just a low here and a low there that works in with our normal. Over a period of time, they might be able to see a little bit of expense, but so far it hasn't been too bad.
Good to.
I hate to extend it because I feel like a person that's got a dilapidated property, you know, the city had this deal, but it expired December 31st. Then they come to me, I said, well, I'll do that if you'll get rid of the property. But if we extend it for another eight months, the, some of the same people that we may be dealing with in eight months down the road, be the same people that would take care of the property maybe in, in March or April.
Yeah.
So, I'd rather go, go, go with the good graces.
Okay, and that, and that's, you know, that's perfectly fine because I do whatever y'all tell me to do.
Yeah.
But we do need to take, yes.
I was going to ask you, so when we put a lien on the property, how long do we hold that lien before the city has the right to sell the property to recoup the cost?
Well, you actually have to go through foreclosure action to recoup those lien costs. So, you know, if the city's out expenses, we can get them back. It's just a, basically whenever I find time to go through the process to foreclose on the lien, so.
Probably when that property, when somebody buys it, it will have to be paid for. They can't get a clear title.
Yeah, and sometimes you get paid that way because if a bank forecloses on the property, if an estate, a lot of times we get paid that way when we have liens on the property, so.
Okay, who's going to make that motion?
I'm making.
Okay, you understand why Erlene's wanting you to motion too?
Yes.
Okay, we're waiting. Clayton.
I'm going. I'm making a motion for what Erlene said.
Yeah.
Did you want us to word it a particular way, Erlene?
Well, I kind of worded it for you, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what.
Clayton's, Clayton's made a motion, who's second it?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll tell you what, Tyler and Erlene, both y'all have put a tremendous lot of time into this project and the community, we appreciate it and the community appreciates it because I can drive through town now and I, I see some of the buildings that's been demolished, tore down in the state of repair, one up by Clayton's house.
Yes.
I drove over there and they were over there working on that.
Yes.
And that's been a mess for at least 20 years because I lived beside it 20 years ago and it was a mess. And we, we got some big issues, properties that we're going to tackle, we're just not biting off the, not going to do that. Let's just, let's learn on this property, learn on this property, learn on this property. When we get our feet sounded good in this procedure, we'll go after these larger properties that are nice or in a disgrace to the city of Litchfield. So, we've not forgot about those, that we're just, we're just getting our feet wet on this. Tyler, thank you very much, Earl, Erlene, thank you very much. You got something else to say?
I think Tyler does.
I also included a sheet in that package you can see. Basically, it's a, it's a labor cost and equipment charge for any abatement procedures that we would do if we have to do them on our own. Most of the prices came from the FEMA recommendations for equipment charges. Some of it, you know, that, that's their recommendation, it's not a requirement of what we have to charge. So, some of it doesn't reflect exactly what FEMA says on these charges. Basically, I was giving that to you guys to look at and see if it was something that you all agreed with or if there's something that needed to be adjusted, either, you know, lower or higher than what's on this paper.
Is that what the city doing or is that with anybody?
This is if the city is, goes and does an abatement. So, like if I have a property to clean up, if we have to use any equipment, say, you know, if we have to take our, we got a 3,500 truck that's a dump bed, you know, at $30 an hour for, from the time it pulls up on the property till that job's done, that vehicle. And then you've got the labor rates. If we have to go and mow a property, it's got lawnmower, weed eaters, blowers, anything, any type of equipment period that we use, there's a cost per hour on it and we would just track how many hours. Like this sheet that you see would go out with, as a work order with the crew doing it and then they would write down whatever equipment they use, how many hours, and then they bring it back to me.
You should claim the whole property though. Cue life.
I did a, a rough estimate for someone that asked me about a property they had that they're, they're wanting to tear down and they asked what would it cost for the city and I, I didn't even get halfway through everything that I thought we might use and they said, well, we'll take care of it ourselves.
Well, it should be an incentive for the property owner to take care of it.
And I don't want to make it where, you know, I don't want to go out here and just take somebody for what, you know, whatever they got. But at the same time, I don't want people to depend on the city to take care of their property.
That's right.
Because we're not charging, you know, if, if we're going to have to go do it, they're going to have to pay for it, so.
And I said, Tyler, we'll, we'll eventually get paid when the property has enough against it and it's sold or whatever. And we're not in the lawnmower business, so we want to make it so high that it encourages a property owner to do that.
Right.
Jessica and I have been talking about volunteer work and this would actually be a good community project for a civic or church organization. There's a lot of homeowners that have become elderly and no family and stuff. It would be good to do that for a property owner and this, when the city gets on your property, it causes a liability to occur against the city. So, we have to dot all the, dot all the i's across all the t's, but a civic organization could come in and help some of these people and it would be a great, great benefit to them.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, Tyler.
I was just wondering, you know.
No, that's, that looks good. Like I said, it, it's not cheap, but we don't want, we don't get, want to get in that business.
Right.
Do you need a motion on that, Erlene?
I, I would, just because it's potentially, we're not really spending money because we're you, basically, we're doing in-house on this, we're not contracting out a bid. I do believe that we need to go ahead and take a vote on it because we are expanding our, using our services and our equipment and our hourly wages for employees.
Working.
So, I would go ahead and ask to take a vote and this would basically be just how we're going to make what you all have agreed for us to go do tonight happen. So, we would just need a vote to say it's going to be in-house.
I'm going to let Jessica make that motion, Erlene, if this is all right.
Yeah, and at these rates Tyler's proposed.
Okay, Jessica.
I'll make a motion.
See, Billy's going to second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Tyler, can you send me a copy of those rates tomorrow?
Yes.
I've got them with me.
Okay, I'll get, I'll get Mayor's copy.
Yeah, I'll get them. Tyler, like I said, I appreciate what work you and Erlene's done.
Yes.
And I, this is going to help change Litch, cleanup Litchfield and the community wants that. Thank you, Tyler.
One more quick thing. We had mentioned it in the workshop earlier tonight, but with the beautification committee, I'd like to reach out to you all, possibly bring back that beautification award that we used to do.
Good idea, that's a good idea.
Because, you know, it, I've said it before, code enforcement's got kind of a bad name anywhere you go. So, we're constantly telling people to clean their property up or do this or do that. It'd be nice to be able to go to somebody and say, hey, you've done a great job.
Laurie.
And.
Somebody's in the lobby.
So.
Looked like a visit, I guess.
So, it's those three.
Check with, you have to check with somebody to see who we give them to already, maybe Laurie or.
Do you have record of who's got those awards?
Were you in on that before you took your next guy?
We just have a template in the system. Oh, who, oh, no, I don't know. We could, I could probably search the minutes and find out. Yeah, we could just type in beautification into the.
I think it's a good idea.
And find out.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll look at that tomorrow for you all and try, try and compile a list the best I can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler.
Appreciate Tyler.
Okay, Chief Rowley, I'm going to start with you. No, Wes Shaw?
Yes, sir.
You got anything you can report to us?
Uh, I do, just wanted to remind you that April 2nd is the cleanup day that we, volunteers come over and help us clean up.
At the Public Works Building.
Public Works Building and I'm going to give you some of the next week install and see which streets we want to make sure that we get.
Okay.
Hopefully the weather will be.
And we want to solicit the general public, where's my camera at that's looking at me? We want to solicit the general public, come out and help us. We'll have a good time. Tootie Kotzler, you going to cook hamburgers?
I am, yes.
And come out and Margie's going to juggle, Clayton's going to do a pogo stick. But we want you, we want the community to come out and help us and if just burdening us down, we got enough burdens without doing this, but now, let's, let's make this as community effort and come out, what time of day, Wes?
We're starting at 8:00.
8:00, April the 2nd.
April 2nd at Public Works facility.
Wes, I, I didn't talk to you, but we've been talking about that in the private room and that, those are open to the public. I talked at Lincoln Trail Wednesday and I talked to the many city mayors and county judge executives. The only person that I've heard that have run a successful recycle program was a judge executive of Mead County is Leslie Stith, S-T-I-T-H, and he invited us to come up there. So, we're going to try to make a trip up there on a Thursday or Friday as, soon. And he's collecting a lot of, he's doing a lot of good stuff, we'll go up there and look at that and see what he's doing. As far as I know, there was not a single community that was doing pickup. They're all bringing it to the recycle centers.
I talked to Elizabeth Town today, they're in Hodginsville, doing a drop off at 37 during, during regular hours. I mean, the community can bring all that and I did talk to the Southern Courts Department in Franklin, Kentucky, and they do curbside pickup.
They do?
They do, and they have a large garbage can and you put everything in it and then they ship it out all mixed together. They don't, they don't.
They don't store it or anything?
No, they have it in a compactor and then they.
Where's it going to, Wes?
Lexington.
I see.
And he said that they, they didn't make any money out of it, but, you know, it did get some of it out of the landfill.
Yeah, well, let's go to Mead County, we have to, we'll go to Franklin as well.
Hodginsville invited us up too. She was very nice about it and they, they sort all theirs on the drop off and then they haul it ourselves to a place of wool.
Well, you know, Mead County's taken several counties.
Yeah, they take Cracker Ridge County, several others that.
Yeah.
It's kind of like a regional hub over there.
Yeah. Well, we're planning to go up there, Laurie said she'll buy our lunch. Anything else you got, Wes?
No, I'm good.
David Rowley, chief of police, give us a, some report from the police department.
Okay, uh, well, I, I think it was about a month ago I sent out an email talking about that we was going to have a few retirements and we had a few people that was going to be leaving the police department. So, we started making some moves to replace, we're losing our detective July 31st, which is a pretty key position. Lot to learn there, including evidence and of course, there's lots of other things involved there, but, so, I decided to put together a five-person panel for promotions. Some of those that was on the panel was Christie Booth, of course, she's human resources. Erlene was on it, she's city attorney, gentleman by the name of Ron Eckert, he's with the Hardin County Task Force and Don Burkhead, of course, he's a retired LPD police chief and Margie was on there because she is a senior councilwoman from the police committee. We had five people that applied for that job, they all done very well. Based on the interviews, it was a point system that utilized by KSP and several other, other agencies and the outcome of that, our new detective will be in Renfro. He'll be taking over that job, he's actually working on it some right now with Kevin Smith, kind of working between the school and the detective position, trying to get that started. Now, with that being said, it presented another small problem that we took care of and I actually confided in Doug Robinson, superintendent of the schools. Of course, everyone on the council knows that the school pays a tremendous amount of our SRO cost salary. So, with that, the decision was made to put Chase Milton at the high school, he'll be the new resource officer. Ian will be working with him on a regular basis and he will actually start out there after spring break. So, I just kind of wanted to give you guys an update also with the loss of Jeff Helvey. I, we needed, we've been making moves, doing interviews and the new hires go through a POPS testing system that is done by the state. Also, we have a pretty stringent hiring process ourself. You know, we, we want to try to get the best we can get for the community. We have hired one young man, his name is Taylor Wright. He went through, went through a very stringent process and he actually will attend the academy starting in May. We've got another one that we're looking at that is going through, currently going through the process right now and the, the thing about it is with the academy is used to, we could reserve spots for what we believe to be our hiring, but now the people actually has to be hired, hired before they will give them a slot. Because I think what was happening is people was holding slots and they was holding slots for classes and people weren't utilizing them. So, so we actually have to hire the people before we can schedule them for class. So, we was just trying to stay on top of what, what is happening right now. I know for a fact, of course, Jeff Helvey, you know that he's already left. Tim Mudader is actually getting out of law enforcement, he's leaving April 8th and as of right now, I know that Kevin Smith is leaving for retirement July 31st. So, we're just trying to, trying to stay on top of it, trying to get new guys in the academy and just trying to recruit pretty hard. So, that's it, Mayor.
David and I had a conversation today in his office and from this point on, the detective would be considered a sergeant. It's, that's what it's done in every other department.
It is.
And I probably should have done Kevin that way earlier, but didn't.
Well, this is, this is something that I've worked on for several years to try to get done and, and, you know, I kind of hit a wall on it. So, you know, we, I, I think we've got it done and I think it's the right thing to do.
I do too. Anybody got any questions?
We also, I'm sorry, Mayor, also for you all that are aware of Jesse Townsend, he is actually a detective for the Hardin County Task Force. I also requested that he get the sergeant rank also. He is the leading detective at the task force in cases and working there and I think that is a, a rank that he deserves. You know, he is a detective and he is still, you know, he still does work for us, so.
Hey, David, if you can, it's impressive. Can, next time or something, can you get a number like how many cases he works?
I, yeah, in fact, in fact, I will have it at the next council meeting to, just to let you guys be aware. He is by far and above every other in cases opened, in cases closed. That includes Elizabeth Town, part of Bullock County and everyone knows what kind of issues Hardin County and Bullock County has. And he by far stands out and above. He, he definitely does his job.
He ain't even close.
No, he definitely does his job and, and we need to, we need to take care of him and we need to try to take care of all of our officers that we have right now. I mean, they're basically like gold.
Yeah.
Everybody, everybody's trying to grab them. So, you know, with KSP getting $14,000 per trooper, it's going to hurt a lot of small departments.
We have drawn up a contract with the new hires, they've signed a three-year contract with us and if they leave prior to that three years, they owe us a substantial sum of money for what we have invested.
They're signing a three-year contract, the new hires are, to stay with us.
Stay with, otherwise you get them trained and, and they take off on you.
Yeah.
Anybody else got anything to say, David?
Erlene, Erlene, does he even have to ask us this? I mean, just for, can he promote in his department without asking the council or not?
Yes, he, he just, I think, wants.
Oh, I, I understand that part of it. I didn't know if he, I didn't want him to think that.
No, he has that right to do that. I do think that he wanted maybe some different views and when, that's why he created the committee, he wanted some.
Oh, I agree with that.
And I think it worked really well that day. Margie can contest that, I think it went really well, just because, and I think David did a really good job of finding different perspectives because he had law enforcement and kind of like a legal perspective, a council member's H R that's dealt with people, you know.
Yeah. I've got the authority to hire far, as mayor.
Yeah.
But the best people to hire is who they're going to work for. Laurie's the best person and the office staff is the best person to hire for office staff and that's the way it is, the police department or other offices as well. And when the mayor gets involved, people get to calling him and wanting a job and wanting, and I just, the best thing to do is just leave to department heads and I do want to, I told David today, I want to be informed who it is and who we're talking about and he does keep me informed and I appreciate that. Anybody, any other police question?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, David. You're doing an excellent job and we're pleased with the police department, the issues that I bring to you, you're always quick to resolve them and we do get, of course, the type work they're in, you get complaints, so that's just part of it as well. Erlene?
Uh, just to let you know, I know I talk a lot about code enforcement, but last time we talked about changing the ordinances on the cars, I haven't got around to drafting that. I will be trying to present that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Tyler also had sent me an email with some other considerations, like I talked about last time. You know, we modeled off of Franklin and some of the, some larger cities. We're finding now that we probably need to scale back a little bit, so we're going to be asking for some amendments. Tyler sent me some of his recommendations, so I'm going to be trying to put that together. Tyler had sent me that email. What I'll try to do is email it out to everybody to look at.
Okay.
And maybe do like a first draft before we do a first reading, that way you all can give your all's input and if y'all could just. can give your all's input. And if y'all could just go through those email, that email and read that attachment of what we're proposing that way, when I draft it, you know, it won't...
Let's just tread lightly. The communities like us that have had code enforcement and they're learning as we're learning. And, uh, when neighbors will begin to understand what will be tolerated and what won't be. But like I said, we, uh, we, they didn't build Rome in a day, so we're not gonna solve all this in a day or two. So, I appreciate your and Tyler's input.
Yeah, and Tyler's a little bit different, like than the Franklin code, because he has a, does he have a secretary? Yeah, Tyler's his own secretary. So, we're gonna scale back a little bit, what he's doing, so...
I'm gonna quit bragging on you guys. Lori, you got anything?
The only thing I have is on Channel Two, I've got another update on it. Um, Lee came in last week and bypassed everything and went, uh, directly to the Comcast modem. And we were able to get through to Channel Two that way. So, it's something internal, um, with our IT people. So, he was contacting Josh to, uh, have him start, uh, troubleshooting to see what that is. I haven't had a chance to reach out to Josh. Sabrina and I were pretty much tied up all last week and the week before with, uh, software updates that's been giving, giving us fits. But, uh, I'll reach out to him one day this week and see if he's had a chance to try and figure it out.
You've had your hands full dealing with that.
Me and Sabrina's had a rough, rough couple of weeks, and this week ain't starting any better.
Yeah. Did you want to name the fence, our fence bids?
Um, we can.
You have attached that Lori gave you. We had two people look at the fence. The fence is gonna keep the old City Hall property isolated from the utility property. And if something's gonna have to be done. And I called Scotty Hawkins down and he looked at it and helped tell us where he would like the fence. And we used a survey that Kendall Clemmons, uh, marked out for. So, the, the two, the two bids we got, Lori.
Um, one of us from Lifeguard Fencing, um, that is Terry Decker. Tammy, is Terry the one that did the dog park fencing?
Yes, he did the dog park and he also did the dugout assembly.
Okay. Um, and he actually did the, the wooden fence back here for us. Um...
Utilities approved.
Yes, Dwight was involved in, in the conversation on where the fence. I, I wanted to make sure that he had the gates and everything where he wanted them, because I didn't know where to put them. So, basically, him and the mayor handled this. Uh, the quotes are just maybe a tad bit different by footage. Uh, and it looks like Scott's from the fence company, I don't know if it's the, yeah, it's still called the fence company, um, has a little more detail to it than Terry's does. But when you look at them, it looks basically the same, uh, with, with exception of just a few feet on the fence and maybe the gate being just a, a tad bit short, not, not as wide. Um, it looks like Terry's at Lifeguard Fencing is thirty-five hundred and the fence company's is sixty-four hundred. And then there's some rock clauses in, in that.
Did we bid this?
No, we don't have to bid this. It's under thirty thousand.
That's only two people locally that's in that business.
I did, well, I did reach out to them.
I know another guy's in that business.
I did reach out to...
Ian Lacy's in it, dude.
I did, I did reach out to Ken and he's getting ready to have surgery and he appreciated me calling, but he said he was gonna have to pass on it.
Yeah. You want a motion to approve?
Yeah, well, I guess we're gonna have to decide between us and utilities who's paying for this.
Well, I mean...
Bob Crawford told me he would.
Well, was it negotiated whether the new property owner and utilities are gonna be splitting it or the city doing it or...
Let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, is the new owner not gonna be responsible for putting the fence up?
It's not to his benefit. We own all that equipment back there.
Okay.
And we're just isolating him from what belongs to us, yeah.
Okay.
And like I said, he's gotta have a way. He's got a basement there. We owe him an entrance to it.
Right.
And, uh, like I said, uh, I hate to call thirty-five hundred dollars not a lot of money, but it's not. He give us, uh, substantial price for that.
Is, is it really gonna matter who? I mean, I'll make a motion to spend thirty-five hundred dollars for it. Spend six thousand.
Well, that would be me too. And, and we can talk to Dwight and see if they'll take it.
But I mean, somebody's gonna have to pay for it anyway.
I, I agree with you. We're the ones that...
Even if we hash it out, somebody's gonna have to pay for it.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
So, if you need a motion from us, I'll make a motion to do the thirty-five.
So, you want for Lifeguard, okay.
Yeah, Lifeguard.
Second, Clayton's gonna second it. All in favor?
Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Lori, you got anything else?
No, but don't forget to go back. Well, I have it on my mind. You skipped Sabrina's second rea, second...
No, I'm going, I'm going, I was gonna come to her next. Uh, are you done, Lori?
I am done, yes.
I, I, I should have got Sabrina before. Uh, Sabrina, tell us what you're here for.
I'm here to do the second reading of the amended budget. I think Erlene can read the first part for me. An ordinance amending the City of Litchfield, Kentucky annual budget for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Whereas the City of Litchfield, Kentucky has heretofore adopted its budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-one and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two by ordinance enacted June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. And whereas it is necessary to amend the said budget ordinance in order to more accurately reflect the avenue, revenues and expenditures of the City of Litchfield, Kentucky in certain budget categories, now therefore bid ordained by the City of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows. That sections one and two of herein above described budget ordinance are amended to read as follows, with deleted portions being indicated by a single line drawn through them and added portions being indicated by a solid line drawn beneath them.
Do you need to read that second page? She's gotta read the number.
Okay. Um, projected cash at June thirty, twenty twenty-one. And the general fund stays the same at six million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and five. And the tourism fund stays the same at one million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight. The revenues, net profit returns stay the same at three hundred and eighty thousand. Occupational taxes stays the same at two million, two hundred thousand. Property taxes stays the same at six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred. Insurance license taxes stays the same at seven hundred and fifty thousand. Franchise taxes stays the same, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. ABC application and regulatory fees stays the same at two hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred. Other licenses, same at nine hundred. Restaurant taxes, same at seven hundred and seventy thousand in the general fund and seven hundred and seventy thousand in the tourism fund. Transfer of restaurant taxes stays the same, negative seven hundred and seventy thousand. Hotel taxes stay the same at seven thousand in the general fund and seven thousand in the tourism fund. Transfer of hotel taxes stay the same at negative seven thousand. Mineral severance income stays the same at sixteen thousand. Rental income stays the same at sixty thousand, nine hundred and fifty. Other revenue changes in the general fund from seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, sixty-seven to seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven. Interest income stays the same at thirty-one thousand, twenty-five. Sale of property stays the same at thirty-nine thousand. Grant income changes from twenty thousand, nine hundred in the general fund to twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and stays the same in the tourism fund at nine hundred. HP four thirteen base court revenue stays the same at seventy-five hundred. Incentive pay stays the same at eighty-six thousand. IDC employee contribute contributions stays the same at hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred. Volunteer fire runs stays the same at one thousand. Grayson County Fire Dues stays the same at one hundred and thirty-five thousand. State Aid Fire Department stays the same at eleven thousand. Planning and zoning permits stay the same at forty-five hundred. Municipal road rates stays the same, hundred and thirty-one thousand. Garbage pickup fees same at one million, three hundred and ninety thousand. Solid waste dumping fees same at seven hundred thousand. Recycling fees same at three thou, two thousand, excuse me. Animal shelter animal control income stays the same at sixty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty. Parks income changes from two hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifteen to two hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and fifteen. Rental income stays the same at eighty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty. Tourism other income stays the same in the tourism fund, five thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Tourism aquatic center revenue stays the same at one hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred. Total current year revenue in the general fund goes from eight million, four hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven to eight million, five hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven. The tourism fund stays the same at nine seventy-eight, one fifty. Total revenue carry forward in the general fund goes from fifteen million, seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-two to fifteen million, thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-two. The tourism fund stays the same at two million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight. Expenditures, general and admin in the general fund goes from three million, forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty to three million, fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty. Alcohol beverage control stays the same at three hundred and ninety-one, two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five. Industrial development coordinator stays the same at one hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and fifty. Police department goes from two million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty to two million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty. Fire department changes from eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, twenty-five, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, twenty-five. Planning and zoning stays the same at one hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and fifty. Public Works Department stays the same at two million, eight hundred and four thousand, three hundred and fifty. Animal shelter animal control stays the same at three hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty. Parks stays as, or changes from five hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and ninety to five hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety. Recreation stays the same at four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-five. Tourism in the tourism fund changes from five hundred thousand, seventeen to five hundred, three thousand, five hundred and seventeen. Tourism aquatic center changes from five hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred to six hundred and two thousand, four hundred and fifty. Total current year expenses in the general fund goes from ten million, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-five to ten million, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, sixty-five. The tourism fund, one million, ninety-four thousand, two hundred and seventeen to one million, one hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven. Current year net income or loss, the general fund, a loss of two million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and eight to two million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and eight. The tourism fund, loss of one hundred and sixteen thousand, sixty-seven to a loss of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventeen. Projected ending cash balance of carry forward in the general fund, four million, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven. Four million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven. Tourism fund, one million, thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-one to one million, thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-one. Adopted this twenty-first day of March, twenty twenty-two after having first been read on the seventh day of March, twenty twenty-two. And then we'll just need to take a vote on it, Mayor.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, second.
Mar, let Margie, Margie's done it second. Is this an individual vote or have we all voted once?
Yes, it needs to be individual.
I'm gonna have you vote on that.
It's a, it's a...
Yea.
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 Anybody have any questions of Sabrina? Sabrina, uh, when we gonna start budget talks?
Uh, I'm waiting on some department heads to get me some information. And as soon as they do and I'm able to get through all the worksheets and put their information in and meet with them, then we will. So, hopefully, the end of this month, beginning of April.
Yep. This side here is gonna be in the budget committee.
And I, I talked to them last week about it. We're gonna try to get, probably after spring break, because I think there's some people out at spring break that say like that. So, I'd say probably after spring break, we'll start having some meetings.
Okay. Elsa, uh, we kind of invited you here tonight. And, uh, could you come up and talk to the council, uh, about tourism and important things?
Sure. Each of you have a handout. Um, basically, about three years ago, we hired, Litchfield Tourism hired a recruiting firm to help entice some businesses that would come into the area. We're going on our third year. COVID, um, I do feel like probably set us back some. They were not able to attend any of the conferences last year. They're basically trade shows that businesses go to who are ready to open additional locations. So, they have started that back this year. And as noted in the report, they're gonna go to do two additional shows just this month. So, hopefully, we will see some, some benefits of that. Um, if not, we'll have to revisit what we want to continue in the contract.
Elsa, when did we last pay them, uh, their fee?
It was, I think it was just before the new year started.
So, it were good till...
I was gonna say, it's been kind of recent, I think.
Yeah, it's been pretty recent.
Then we're good until basically the first of next year.
We are. But I don't think it's something we need to let draw on for five years and not see any benefits.
No, that's right. I think we need to revisit that. And no doubt, COVID
Right.
made all the difference in the world.
Right. And of the companies that we interviewed, we chose Nexite because they were, we paid them based off of the businesses that they brought in. So, they were success-driven fees versus a one fee whether or not you had success. So, I would, I would hope that would give them a little bit more drive to find businesses that would, that would succeed in our area.
Sure.
And, quick update too on the architect that we talked about. We did go on and hire that for the Alice Theater. They have done one walkthrough and we're waiting to hear a report. So, I'll keep you guys posted on anything I find to see if that's feasible for us. May, we're really getting ready to get into the heat of tourism season. So, May fourteenth will be our first East Main Market concert. That'll be the second Saturday of each month and it'll be an all-day-long, um, event. And then Friday night, the night before, there'll be a gospel concert. So, I'll make sure and get that information out to everyone and on social media. The next week is Art in the Park. And then on the twenty-eighth of May is our Memorial Day ceremony. So, I would love to see all of your faces there. We, we need volunteers to carry the placards. And I think that that sometimes get, we get forgotten.
Anybody got any questions for Elsa? Moon, you got any questions?
Right after prom on the square.
Right. So, um, my only involvement with prom on the square was helping to get the permit.
I don't know that we have really much involvement either, do we?
Right.
Other than approving it.
Well, I said, we had to apply for the permit to get it.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'm not, that's done been, there's no sense making a discussion about it.
Right. I mean, to my knowledge, it's being planned. It's gonna happen.
Yeah, what date is it?
Oh, goodness, Mayor.
Yeah, we give them the go-ahead to do it.
Right. And they get, they, state gave them the permit to do it.
Yeah.
And I did ask about like rain or weather. And they do have, you know, a backup plan for that. So, but that is my only involvement with it.
Is it April the twenty-third? Is that what someone said earlier?
I think so.
Could be.
They have a line to, did they want some more lighting or something?
They've not requested that from me.
I think they were gonna talk to Judge Henderson about that.
I was gonna say, wasn't that the ones that the county strings up?
Clayton, you got anything to ask Elsa? Margie?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Nope. Thanks for coming.
Tammy, you, you wanna give us a report on parching wreck?
We had one applicant for ball director and that was Gary Skaggs. Um, we had our first meeting on Thursday. Uh, like to, since we're kind of in the final stretch here, I'd like to take that recommendation to go ahead and hire him. He's already had all his paperwork submitted. Um, he just has to go through HR. So, make the recommendation to hire Gary Skaggs as our, uh, director for baseball. Uh, we have just completed all of our registrations. We have a hundred and ten T-ball players.
Awesome.
Sixty-five, I think, of the, um, minor, or no, coach pitch. And then I think there's fifty-six for minor. And then major, we have forty-seven. And I think Babe Ruth, we don't, we don't have enough...
Good job.
So, we're getting there. Softball, I don't know their exact numbers, but we have really increased in softball also. And we actually have enough teams to do both fast pitch and slow pitch. So, it's increasing. Um, we will do team picks on Wednesday for softball, team picks for baseball on Thursday. And they hope to have, start practicing the following week. So, we're getting there. We're getting into the season. So, I think it's really gonna be a successful season. Um, we're working on getting the pool up and running. So, it's a process there too. Worked out my arms, got a good workout on that one. But, um, other than that, we have also the Alta Glider. I don't know if y'all remember the Christopher Reece grant that we received. The Alta Glider has finally arrived and it's supposed to be installed this week at Bevel Park. So, other than that.
You got any questions?
I was gonna ask you a little bit about that. Do you need another barrier? You know, we've talked about them, them shrubs there.
I would like to, even if it's just a, um, decorative fence, it keeps the kids from running. So, that is just something I would really...
The shrubs just aren't big enough yet to do anything.
No, and a decorative fence would be really nice. I had, um, a family that came and played at the playground. They said it was amazing, but their son took off running to the road.
Yeah.
And she said, I just can't do that when she has two children there. And also, speaking of the park, uh, Chief Riley and I discussed earlier this morning, and I talked it over with the mayor, we're gonna go back to closing the park in, at night, um, just to prevent anything from happening, any damage. We have too much money invested in over there. Uh, I would like to keep it safe.
Who's gonna close it?
We're gonna close it at ten and open it at five, correct?
You guys gonna, good job, Mayor.
We are. We're also gonna go ahead and lock the bathrooms there also. Um, Keith has been having to tidy up a, a lot of messes.
Every night.
And it's not fair to him. He's had to paint the walls in the upper Bevel bathroom just about once or twice a week because somebody's writing on the walls in there. So, we're just gonna go ahead and close that. I've already talked to chief. We got all the keys and everything situated. So, we're gonna start that immediately.
Nice.
So, and I have posted on Facebook. So, hopefully, I don't seem, I don't think anybody's really gonna have that much of a problem with it, because it'll be open in time for walkers.
You got any, Moon, you got any questions to ask Tammy?
No.
Margie?
I'd love to go play out there.
Do we need a motion to hire him?
No.
It's just a recommendation that I make to you guys.
I don't, I want the mayor to...
Okay.
Jessica, you got any question?
Nope.
Billy?
And just as softball, when that starts, I've already talked to the chief. We're gonna make sure that the base softball games are done before we lock the gates. But we'll make sure it's all cleared out. So, those days may be a little bit later, but they're usually out of there by nine, nine-thirty. So...
Thank you, Tammy.
Alright, thank you.
You're doing excellent. You're doing an excellent job. Okay, Scott, you wanna say anything to the city council?
No.
Pudgy?
Karen?
Terry? Ruby? Does anybody, if not, I'm gonna look for a motion adjourned. Who's gonna, Tootie Cottrell? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't go through the council. I'm sorry, Clayton. Moon?
I gave a flight about that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't go through the.
It won't take that long. I've had several people contact me about old paint or where they painted their houses and years ago and had them in storage and they need to get rid of them. And so, you know, what do we?
I tell you what they run into, Clayton, and I didn't realize that. They put that in the back of a garbage truck, say.
Right.
And the compactor, that ends up on the road. Then you come behind it. Wes, why you think about that suggestion?
I recommend to somebody, if you have some paint that you need to get rid of, take the lid off of it and take some kitty litter or something and pour it in.
Pour it in, yeah.
And let it set for a week or so.